All right, let's do this. We'll see you for the clutch.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, Heidi, thanks for joining us for the PACT meeting. Let's begin. Do we have questions come up from last week's meeting to tonight? Either you sent them to Kate or you came prepared.
I was not aware that as a group we had come up with any questions. Um, Kate, and I don't know if you heard separately from Lester, I did not hear separately.
I did not hear from anyone. Oh, because it's awesome. I did not hear from anyone. I don't know. The president said this. So it's four this afternoon.
Okay.
With four.
Did the board itself have any questions that came up? Or you guys have questions tonight that you are gonna?
So I did get an email sent to me from Kate Davis that Lester sent to her about things he wanted to talk about tonight. And that was at 5:30. So hopefully he'll come so he can address what he was talking about.
I'm just making sure you didn't send it to him as well.
Thanks. You were not in the email?
And I do not get sent one.
Okay, it was Kate, Esther, Heidi, and Joe. But it doesn't say that he's not coming.
So I have one question.
Yeah.
On the, uh, the out of district placements for our three students where we currently have one, right? I mean, we're anticipating that we may or may not have one or two more. Consider a good idea, I mean, had, I mean, we might just have the one.
Right.
But if we do have more, I think, isn't there, and correct me if I'm wrong, since I'm new here, but isn't there a, uh, a special education trust? I believe there's $483,000.
Yes. So we do both. We plan for a guestimate and then we have the trust fund to file back on if we need to go over those three.
That number in the budget is based on stronger potential of what they see coming currently in, um, younger grades that maybe they anticipate based on what's happening right now, that they won't continue to be able to access their education in this setting. It's a high probability. Um, as well as Selena is sick today, but she was gonna come tonight with a request to the board to access the special trust fund for expenses this year. Escalate expenses, large amounts of money. So that's why I think we want to, we put that in there as well as we were hoping that we would have maybe a separate warrant, maybe from time balance, from balance into, back into the special trust because, um, I know that Selena's gonna make a request, that's a large request from that for unanticipated placements.
My legal language is to access the trust, the trust is that has to be, um, unanticipated funds. It can't be something that we think is of high probability. And so that you're always looking at that balance of, you know, we only have one student currently, but we have other students and I've got my parents stay away from the actual number. Because it's can be identifying, um, there's high probability we'll have other students that will be out of district next year.
Can you also pull out of the special trust fund for a variety of reasons? It might not just be to outplace a student that you weren't anticipating. It could be to hire and support. You could have two students move in who all of a sudden need one-on-one support. You're not staffed for that. You might need to hire and dip into that. So it serves a variety of purposes versus that budget line that might just be specifically for out of district.
Kate, can you address what the current year requests are going to be that they're taking a drop from the trust fund?
Uh, we don't know right now. Selena's compiling all of that. We've had, um, a variety of things, but, um, a lot of it is, um, unanticipated students that moved in. Um, and then a bigger chunk of that is actually a dramatic increase in, uh, but I think she tried to, she did identify it next year in, um, visually impaired feeding and swallowing, things like that for students that came in. Uh, if you look on page three of 15 under related services, um, 1210 to 50331, you see an increase there because we are trying to better anticipate for some of the book we have moved in that require services to be done. And book if they can be moved in that students.
So students have moved in this year that you aren't anticipating or requiring services? Any out of district placement that you're aware of that's being contemplated for this year?
We are trying to, we're in the middle of looking at some additional placements. And as you know, that's sort of a lengthy process and it really is a team decision. Um, and we're working really hard in conjunction with Esther too to try to think about some restructuring here to have to keep students here at least than for this year. Obviously in the future moving forward, we're with the board, maybe even start some of those conversations about programmatic offerings in the future. One of the things that we talked about here is the space limitations because often for programmatic space, you needed, uh, programs, you need programmatic spaces, which we unfortunately don't have right now. So it's kind of like in that middle phase right now where there's some unknowns that, we weren't planning for, that we are now trying to plan for, but then we can't create space. So that kind of does influence whether we can keep people here or not.
Sure, yeah, that makes sense.
Um, we recently had the fire inspection, um, which we have every year. And, um, as you know, Governor Stenon has signed it into law about a year ago. And so even some of the small like nooks and crannies we were trying to utilize throughout the building, we can no longer utilize because you can't have those materials in the hallways or in stairwells. And so again, we're trying to create space that just isn't there. I think, Katie, if I remember, two years ago, we actually turned several of the closets into office space. We had done like a small construction project just to try to, try to create some smaller spaces so we can service our kids here. Cause that's ideal is to keep your, the students in, in our school, but it doesn't always work out.
Yeah. And I, I know you had mentioned last week that you have brought in, um, specialists in that line item. You, you do currently, you're currently actually drawing from that to help with keeping students in school. So is it sort of two-pronged in that you see some additional requirements from that? Like pool of money? And then also the possibility for the, for the more extreme, um, actions?
Student profiles are much more complex than they might have been five or 10 years ago. Um, and in addition to that, when we start thinking about the need for therapeutic placement, not just an educational placement. And so we can provide an education. We can provide very limited therapeutic part of that. And so right now that's sort of playing into some of the need for out of district placement.
Going up in order, I can hear. Do we need to do the timer for public comment? Or is that on the second?
We put it in the agenda after the.
Got it, I just wanted to.
And Kate, if you wanted to listen and then would have questions?
Got it.
Or comments.
So, I mean, overall, I personally, again, I'm, I'm theo fight looking at the budget, but, you know, I, I thought it was a well, looked to me like a well thought out budget. Nine percent increase, you know, I know there's inflation. It's a little, little high, but, um, that's just for a comparison, I know you can't compare, but the town is looking at, uh, 2.2 on their side. But, you know, you'd expect a school to be more. But I, I thought it was well put together. And that was my only real question was about the, the out of district.
Yeah, we, um, it's a delicate balance with the out of district placement. And it's really difficult to talk about it because it can become identifying those students. So it's, I feel like I'm being really vague, but I have to be really.
No, it's fine.
Text you confidentiality.
Excellent.
That's it. The only thing in reading Lester's, since he's not here, is to try and speak to it. So if he does have questions in new, uh, meetings separately, you get a phone call or something. Um, he's talking about the, the maintenance and he's briefly discussed at the end of last week's meeting, his concern about it being an old building and the maintenance trust fund, which is very similar to the special trust fund, only it is for maintenance. I'm, I'm not sure if Lester's in the loop of all the work you guys are doing as a board around renovation and looking at, um, renovating this building. And so there has been, he wanted some data around what the needs were. So we could always send him the information that was in that on the building so maybe Jen, you maybe could connect with him.
Yeah.
Just to explain what the building committee is doing and that we have had an assessment. We do know what the building needs and, and that was really his question. I thought you'd be a great person to answer that with all your background. If you wouldn't mind.
I think you kind of, you touched on it briefly last time, or somebody did.
Yes, yes.
We have some documentation though that we can show him.
We've done a, you know, a building audit, a program audit. So that's in preparation for planning the next steps of putting him in, uh, renovating.
Here if you want.
Hopefully that would help.
Okay.
Answer this question.
Great. Yeah. So in years past, um, the committee sometimes will, will kind of like caucus outside, um, in a room. I don't know if there's a room out off.
We can open this right at the end.
Yeah.
Calming.
Yeah. Calming is good.
Minus the neon light from my tower.
Oh, yes, definitely a little.
Yeah.
I can let you right in here.
Joe, does the town have anything on the warrant in March? Anything else other than budgets?
Uh, it hasn't been the biggest. We're a little ahead.
It's like all programs. If we do, it is.
There are things. Yes.
They're all not.
Okay.
Does the par stuff will be on the warrant?
Are you crawling in that room?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Someone, a student actually brought in peppers from her home. Like she started some things and they were big enough to bring in. And she brought in the clippings and they took, which I was surprised, but peppers are very, and they took in the tower garden, so it's good. The kids just harvested, so the lettuce is looking a little, a little rough, but it's a, I have two kids that, um, check the pH once a week. Yeah, there's a pool.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
You drink the lettuce?
Yeah, my pH checkers. A scientist.
Are they coming back? Do they, are they, I'm not sure what's happening.
They come back in. They talk from, usually in years past, they would step out. And then depends, it hasn't always been every year, but sometimes.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't have a memory of this.
I'm sorry?
I don't have a memory of this happening.
Yeah, I remember.
Do you want to continue in the agenda?
Should we carry on?
Yes.
Your student council rep won't be here until seven. If we can just open it back up when he comes. Is that okay?
What?
The student council rep that's coming just won't be here until seven.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Okay. He's. Still do public. Cause he can be a visitor.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you want me to start the?
Please start the timer for our public input. Anybody? And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes from Wednesday, November 9th? Public meeting.
The only thing I was gonna clarify is on, uh, 4-2 where we talk about the financial report. And it just says Jennifer Scraper did a question about benefits for teachers or teacher salaries. I think really what I was asking is, um, is how will, because of the, um, extra hours for the paras, how will that be rectified by the end of the year in the budget? So just a clarification there.
Okay. Other corrections, changes? See if we want to make a motion to approve the minutes from November. I just said it.
I'll move to approve with that one modification.
No, please. Second?
Second.
Thank you. And we take a roll call?
No, just vote.
All those in favor?
Hi.
And we'll look at the non-public for minutes from that same night. Any changes? Anybody make a motion?
I'll move to approve them.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Great. Michelle?
So you received in your board pack where you stand with the latest financials? So we get remaining expenses at the last meeting of 295, 749.
Can you take a microphone so we can?
What do I go?
Thank you.
Okay, so at the last meeting, the expense remaining was 295, 749. And the expenses for this month or the encumbrances were another 150, 398. Leaving us with remaining expense of 180, 351. Now, most of the expenses this month pertained to, um, some increased special ed costs, the longevity and medical buyouts to personnel. And we had to encumber more money for utilities and the waste management, um, trash pickup. So I know we're looking into changing vendors. Waste management is extremely expensive. They're one of the most expensive vendors.
Can I pause you? I think you turned that off when you hit the button. Up is on.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Thank you.
Contract with waste management does end at the end of this fiscal year, so June. So Tim has been calling around to see if we can negotiate a much more reasonable, I think it's not exponentially over the past couple of years. And they're already on high end anyway. So he has been, um, calling around and then trying to like go back and forth with them. Like, well, I don't know, you know, try to, see what he can come up with.
Do we know who the other schools use for Mr. Fox for, um, composting and?
Yeah, they use that for composting. They use Troyano and.
There's one other one.
There's one other one. Casella.
Casella, thank you.
Casella is the other vendor.
I think that he's leaning, and I don't actually think he's the best response right now, but he hasn't obviously made any decisions yet.
Is there any interest in the school in using Mr. Fox for composting?
So we did prior to COVID.
Yeah.
I think right now.
Did we use Mr. Fox for that?
We did.
Yeah.
Um, I think the concern right now is like, for example, right now we have two people in the kitchen. And adding another layer of like managing compost is a lot. Um, originally we had hoped it would be students, um, but that became almost really difficult as well. So there had to be like pair of volunteers and that was supposed to go.
I remember.
Food service staff. So I don't know that that's the direction we're going, especially I think we all think that that's the responsible thing to do. I'm not sure.
Not reasonable.
Thing that I would consider putting on the plate above other things.
Thanks.
I know at some of the budget affairs meetings, they were talking about that. Is, is that negotiated on an SAU basis?
The, so the waste management?
Mm-hmm.
No, that is, right now it is, it is each district doing their own. We have, we will look at the expenses that are coming through and we'll try to talk to the districts and say, hey, we're seeing something different in another district, lower costs.
Yeah.
Would you want to consider changing over?
And it actually is negotiated with some districts that, we have the facilities manager, Rusty covers the co-op, Brentwood, and Extra Elementary. So that is one big unit.
Right.
Because Tim Harrington is a standard old facilities manager. So that's why, because Rusty is the facilities manager for Brentwood, for Stratt. You have your own facilities manager versus SAU, co-op, Extra Elementary. And Brentwood are all handled under Rusty, who's the facility manager. So he, but oftentimes everybody gets the benefit of that. For example, if you needed a plumber, you hire through Rusty and get half the rate because we have an SAU plumber on staff. Those things like that, everybody takes advantage of. So it is kind of a contract that's negotiated for a large group. And oftentimes, you know, it helps to say, well, part of SAU 16, they get a rate of XYZ. We want to go into and.
Okay.
It is a larger group that does, um, negotiate that waste management contract for those schools I mentioned that Rusty manages.
Thanks.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Thanks, Michelle.
What? Have the manifest signed? Do you want me to grab those?
Yeah, they are signed.
Jennifer, do you have a board report for the building committee?
Uh, we are looking forward to a long day next, Thursday, the 29th. Uh, we're gonna check out three different schools without kids in them.
Awesome.
Um, and I think that's gonna be Kate, Davis, myself, um, Stanwell.
So, you know, I think my.
Lester.
Lester. I'm gonna come back in briefly.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. So what schools do you see?
Little Harbor, New York.
Thank you. Policy committee did not meet in November. We had a last minute cancellation of the meeting. And we met last Thursday. So in our next board packet, we should have some things to reveal. So really nothing to report on the policy committee.
We're done. Kate, you're up. Do you have any questions about what was submitted to you from the principal's update? And it felt pretty short, um, but it felt like we just, we just had ones. There hasn't been a lot of things, particularly when it's new school. At first, there's really.
Yeah, administration calls it that too?
Oh, everything. It's, you need to help to get in rhythm when you're like.
How are parents feeling about student led conferences? You've been getting good feedback?
So the, um, teachers are getting great feedback. I think it's, um, we're getting more and more positive feedback based, I believe, on kids being more and more prepared because now they've done it a couple of times.
Okay.
I think, you know, the first time a student does it, uh, was the first time we're rolling it out full school, um, it's new for everybody. And so that idea of really being prepared to talk about all parts of their learning, to talk about the growth versus some of the consistent challenges, um, is hard, but big, it's a learning curve, right? So now that kids have done it more and more times, um, we're getting much more positive feedback, I think, um, I know, from our families regarding that experience. The other part too is, um, staff was asked to offer an opportunity that if a parent really, or a caregiver really felt they needed some like one-on-one time, um, because they had questions or thoughts or something like that, they could schedule that with a teacher at another time. We had, we had that conversation.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that also helps for people that are like, I really wanted to talk about this and I really didn't want my students sitting there. Uh, and then that can be a really focused conversation.
Okay.
So it still provides the students the opportunity to take ownership and articulate and defend, but that also gives, um, caregivers the opportunity to touch base with a parent with a teacher if they feel it's necessary.
And we had that book group that presented to you last year that did the student led conference work. And so we followed up after conferences and had a conversation about it. And one of our big takeaways was in planning for the future next year, looking at some new things we've rolled out, student-led conferences, the exhibitions of learning, the progress reports, and looking at timing of things to create that snapshot for parents over the year. So that's work for us to look at next year as far as, you know, timing.
Yeah.
In the works.
Moving on. Oh, do you have a bussing update?
Kate asked me to put that on.
I did? Kate Davis?
Wait a minute, I don't remember putting that on.
I mean, buses continue to be interesting.
She just asked me to put it on and I wanted, maybe one of you, did you want to?
Yeah, I did. I was asking about it just because, um, you know, 30 buses still go out so late, particularly 31. And, um, uh, and then we had an incident a few weeks ago where a bus didn't come. And then now the buses are 10 minutes later in the morning. And so just kind of that transition. And then you said school starts at 8:25, but I know the bus picks up at 8:15. So it's just, how does that all work? How, what, how's it going?
Um, I think bussing is really complicated. I feel like she was really does a really good job. I mean, she's often here, like if she'll, when she made the adjustment for 10 minutes or five minutes, she was here for like three weeks straight to try to figure that out. Part of that came from some of the buses were getting here so early that the kids were sitting on the bus for 10 minutes. That's not appropriate either. So I know that that was sort of where that adjustment came in. I think the bigger part that we're continuing to struggle with, I think more about buses is trying to get the timing appropriate, both at the end of the day and the beginning of the day. We actually have adjusted end of the day procedures as well to try and make that smoother. One of the things we are finding is that, um, we love that the kids can go outside and have that time to run around, but it gets them escalated, of course, because they're playing excited and then getting on the bus. Not working out really tough for the kids. We had thought the opposite. Like we thought, oh, good, they're gonna go outside, they're not gonna be. And it was just stimulating, as it should be. But then trying to get on a bus with, you know, two kids in every seat, that's really challenging. Sometimes it was three kids in a seat. So, um, Kate and I, Kate, more than I, have been doing a lot of work with the buses. Kate's been riding bus 28 home. We are working to try and hire a bus monitor, particularly for bus 28. It's a very challenging dynamics. We often have meetings with kids about the bus. We have meetings with groups of kids about the bus, single kids, classrooms.
Parents.
Parents. It's, buses are challenging. It is a very, and this is not a reflection of bus drivers. They're just like, how do I get you home safe, right? Like I'm so worried. It is a very unstructured time. And so, um, the leadership team met a couple of weeks ago. And so we're dismissing like sometimes it's younger kids first so that they're not in the hallway with the older kids, just trying to calm things down. We have adults, um, escorting them everywhere now so that it's really kind of more zen at the end of the day in hopes of just keeping the kids. We've asked all teachers at the end of the day to an end of the day meeting where they de-escalate their kids and make sure they're regulated before they walk out of the room. It's a really hard time for our kids.
Yeah.
So it's continuing to evolve over time.
Yeah. I know teachers have said stuff to me about those 30 buses being so much later, but it's just that there's no drivers.
There's nine instead of 10. We had you set 10 buses. There's no drivers, so you have nine. And then you think that makes every room a little bit longer. And I think we're finding now we weren't during COVID, we had less kids riding the bus. Now we have a lot more kids riding the bus. A lot of families are back to work and there's not, so when you have that many more kids and that many more stops.
Half of our buses, I think, come from CMS. Right there on CMS.
All the way, we're all at Stratt School.
So we have Stratt School. So we're dependent on when they finish there. Unless it's an early release, they're all here at once. 10 buses load, here out. 9 buses load, that's it.
There's our favorite.
8 buses get on the bus. We get a little taste of like, that's how much we. So that is, that's the reality.
Can you remind me what the deal is with the nine? I think we talked about this before. Are we getting like a credit for that or, because we contracted for something?
Yeah.
We just serve.
We just say. No, it's, that is.
Yeah.
But we would pay for only what we use.
Only what we use.
Right, of course.
I think we actually budgeted for nine this year because Trish was clear with us last year that she didn't think it was any, you can double check, but I'm pretty sure we budgeted for nine this year. We had nine last year as well.
I know.
There are no.
They just can't fill the positions.
I mean, we've had, I don't know many of your children on the bus, but we've had a lot of substitute bus drivers. Most of them leave in the middle of the year. We try to find any bus driver and then people from the office are driving the buses because there aren't, it's.
Do they have a plan for next year? Are they gonna like, are they gonna suggest that? I mean, there's a clearing floor. It's called labor rates, right? You can get anybody to drive a bus if you pay them enough.
I mean, they did sign on those in everything there. Like they were, oh, they did nothing. I mean, I, I don't know if you've ever.
60 kids at 3 o'clock, you know?
I'm sure it's hard.
Right, I just think, and I don't know, I mean, there's some people here that used to be bus drivers and that they can articulate it for a year really quickly because it's just like, oh gosh, you just want to get the kids home safe and that's so important, that's a very intense stress. And I feel like, I mean, when, two years ago, there was like advertising everywhere, we'd have the walls, we'd send out the newsletters, it was bonus signs, there were signs along all the roads, it was like political signs what bus drivers needed.
I think part of it too is the hours of it, it's hard to work another job. So people who try to work during the day, it's like, well, gotta be.
You can't.
Can't, so that limited, you know, is the feedback I've gotten.
July town, it's on every corner there or something. Your school district are looking for bus drivers.
Yeah, it's the same in many ways with parent professionals. It's a real struggle.
Yeah.
So we just had a meeting trying to figure out what to do, you know, particularly in the co-op. We're down a lot, a many, many powers and stressing the system. And so the people that are there are getting more stressed and so it's a, it's a vicious cycle. The bus drivers at similar kind of pay range and at similar kind of hours and similar kind of benefits, so. For sure.
Yep. Interesting to see what the contract is next year. They try to fix any of that with.
Yeah. Molly's had great, I mean, at least I feel like Molly's been really great about negotiating those contracts.
She did great.
Working really hard with them to be like, you have to be more reasonable, like this is just.
I think she knows they have a four-year contract.
It's a three-year contract. Yeah, we negotiated 2.85 in year one, 2.9 in year two, 2.95 in year three with a two-hour, two-year extension possibility at the end at a 3%, I believe.
And only pay for what we use.
And we only pay for what we use.
And this is year one, right? Is this year one or year two?
This is year two.
It seems like.
Just so you know, Michelle, Michelle looked and we did have a note of 10 buses, so we did budget for 10.
That makes me happy. I mean, not that we don't have 10 buses, but it makes me happy that.
We'll be able to do this a little bit.
Great. Sorry, just two quick questions. What, how many kids, what percent do kids take the bus?
I'd have to look it up in, and it's so dependent on the day. So like we have some kids that go to SLC and they only build Tuesday, Thursday, and then, so it really is dependent. I would estimate probably.
30 kids in a bus is 270, about that?
I would say a little bit more than that because we have some important that. So I would say maybe 300, so maybe 60%.
Yeah. I was just wondering if that parent pickup line is getting bigger or, you know.
It's actually fast this year, it's much faster, like 15 minutes max.
Yeah.
Just in comparison to 30 previous, it feels really good. And we were really hesitant to move it back onto the side of the building where it used to go around because we were like, it's so long. But we are finding that hand traffic on different levels, which was, for two years, that was a real concern, probably hadn't been going back until.
Thank you for sending the note about, thank you for sending the note about the drop-off closing at 8:25.
It's still not working.
I know.
It's gonna be a reminder again. I went out the other day and there were actually kids just standing on that way in the doors.
Right.
I'm like, hmm, nope. Sign says closed and we send out reminders. I just go back to the kids like, right, that's not okay, the kids are unsupervised out there, like that's not appropriate.
But all they have to do is just pull, plug on the doors.
Right, I think I said that in the beginning. Just drop off the front entrance, it's okay.
I wonder if it's newer parents because I know it used to work that way. The old one got well-trained, so.
I mean, we're gonna keep drawing, right? We can just keep reminding and asking. I have called certain families and said, hey, you know, to vigil.
Well, I don't know, but to your point just about the school day, the time period, the additional 15 minutes, the whole thing, if we're not starting, then we're not stopping and.
We are still going till 3:05, our 8:25 start has been affected by a lot of that.
Right, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, all right. Thanks, Kate. Board goals.
So it was included in the packet, what's on the board currently?
Your thoughts on board goals? Like, how fast can we go through these? So some of these strike me as not being the purview of the board and we have to be really careful that we're staying in our lane. Policy, budget, and I think some of those get away from that. Lost them. Like, what ones are you talking about? When we talk about specific data numbers, we can provide funds, we can provide support, but the board cannot say this is what we're gonna meet because that's beyond our.
Yeah, I mean, those are, those two are mine, I can speak to those.
Okay.
It's the two on the revised that was sent out, sorry I was late on that. My thing that I would, that I would disagree with you on that specifically on is like if you look at the, I think it's Ed 30301, when they talk about what each school board shall do, which I think is treated as RSI. If you go to, I'll draw this around, I'll probably just read it because I don't have a bunch of copies here. But point G of what school board shall do is in consultation with the superintendent and in accordance with statutes and rules of the state, Board of Education, determine the educational goals of the district, develop long-range plans and identify measurable and attainable short-term objectives. It continues to go on to require implementation of those educational programs, et cetera, and then there's a whole bunch of stuff that we also are tasked with doing, which we do.
Maybe speak a little bit to that?
Can you, can you get out of my?
So the language in the 303s is exactly how Eric read it in conjunction with the superintendent, which to us has always inferred and we've interpreted that as the superintendent does with, in conjunction with building administration, the nitty-gritty. So you, as a board, to have input and conversation would be you want to have presentations quarterly on data and growth and then make recommendations. Look, the math progress seems great or it doesn't, we would really like you to come forth, administration, superintendent, administration, with what you're gonna, what the plan is. So maybe support the planning by getting normal, regular data reports and progress reports around academics, social, emotional growth, whatever the board receives. And then it's our job to say, all right, we think we can, we can move it, I don't know, 40 data points and we, we're gonna shoot for 80% or we're gonna shoot for 100% versus the board saying, we want 95% proficient because you, you don't have that purview, meaning that that knowledge base of the data really aren't, that's our job, that's what we have our expertise in, is we look at the data and go, what's realistic, what do we need? So the board to request that we do those normal data report out so you can have that information and then ask questions is usually how boards interpret that 303 in conjunction with the superintendent. And I did supply the chair with what Brentwood and Newfields and I think East Kingston put in relation to the 303 goal around just what you read. So that may be helpful and as the board discusses this through.
I'd love to hear what you have.
Number one is that East Kingston. Because I don't reach them all.
Do you want me to read them aloud or would somebody like to read them aloud just so that, instead of us passing them around? So this is East Kingston. It says, this, I think it's point one, right? It's related specifically academics.
It's a reference to East Kingston's actions to the 303.
Yeah, right, right. It says, "The East Kingston School Board shall participate in public discussions with administration about triennial reports on student academic growth and learning to support an informed decision-making process." And then for Brentwood. Was there one specifically around academics or no?
Yeah, there's Newfields and Brentwood, both on that sheet.
Review data.
Review data to shape policy and allocate resources that support student growth and learning. Yeah, I think those, those are the ones that spoke mostly to academics. Well, past goes without a few folks want to take a look as well.
So in the past, we've done board goals as a workshop, not as part of a meeting.
Correct.
Did you and Kate have a conversation about putting this on a, as a meeting item instead of a workshop?
Yeah, if you recall, we had a workshop and we set the goals for, that we're supposed to go through May and then this board wanted to revisit those goals now. So that's how it got put on the agenda of now. We did do a workshop, we usually do a workshop in May to set the goals after the board seat sometimes change and things like that, so we have a full board for a full year.
So we usually do them in the fall and then in the fall we said, let's wait and do them in May. So I don't think we're, since I've been here, we haven't done them in May?
Right, we, we keep, because we had so many board changes coming, right? So you, some boards like to do it in May, some boards like to do it workshop in August or September. Our customer's been September and then I heard Kate say she wanted to do it in May this year, so, but then they got moved per discussion of this current board.
Yeah, okay. So I was not here for that November discussion. Do you want, what would you like to have accomplished tonight? Do you want to create goals? I would prefer to do this in a workshop setting than in a meeting setting. And I do think that, I think that the goals should be made up by the new board members.
I mean, I would like for Kate to be able to weigh in on frankly, so it was a surprise that she was not gonna be here this evening unexpectedly. That's just my own personal preference. I feel like it's valuable to have her input as well.
I agree.
I did ask her about this when she called me to say that she wasn't gonna be able to make tonight and she said she was happy with whatever the board chose to do. As I said, would you like me to, you know, put it on the agenda for next month again or a workshop or anything like that? She felt that she had put her input into the last goal round and was satisfied with what she had, so she was happy to go with whatever the board decided or to, for the, to put it on the agenda or have a workshop. So really, she's open to whatever you all want to do.
Yeah, I think in November, we just talked about it because the board goals, I mean, I really look at them as the previous board goals, like they're not measurable or, you know, really even super concrete. And so I just thought that we really needed to have them reflect this current board. I agree. And then also waiting till May, you know, we have elections in March, it just made, it just made more sense that it's something we revisit that stands for us every meeting. So I think a workshop definitely makes more sense so that we can talk a little bit easier. Can we do it, you know, next month?
Next month will be difficult because it'd be, now we're going into public hearings and deliberative sessions across the SAU. So we all have extra meetings as it is, so scheduling, that will be difficult. Certainly you can have a workshop and I don't necessarily have to be there, but I would like to be there. So it's really the board's call.
We did create the current board goals before the deliberative, right? We did the workshop in the cafeteria last year before the deliberative.
Yes.
Yeah. And they were rushed. Yeah.
That did not.
It didn't go up. It did not go up.
Yeah, can I, so I, to me, the board goals are, they're critical. I mean, they're gonna help define and guide everything that we do as a board, everything that we do in partnership. This is not something we can do in a two-hour meeting with a bunch of other stuff going on. So I think, I think it has to be a workshop, otherwise it's gonna, it should be just, whatever the term is, we're just gonna kind of splash through just to say, just to kind of check a box. I think it has to be a workshop. But then I also struggle with in, in three months, we potentially have, well, I guess it's really only potentially one seat change of work, but it's new people. So, you know, I think that the upcoming month of January is going to be shot because it's also a critical time, we have to do a lot of preparation work. I think that realistically, I'd love to say that, you know, we had super important, we have to get it done now, but the reality is January's gonna be consumed. And so I think we'd rather, I think we're better suited to be very deliberate and thoughtful in our approach, which means I, for me personally, at the earliest, it's gotta be a workshop in February, maybe March, to do preparation work for whatever the board looks like after the election. I just, I understand that the goals we have now may no longer be applicable. In fact, I think they also reference COVID in the current goals, right? So they're not applicable, right? And so while that's not ideal.
Or if it matched, maybe they're not, or maybe they were matched.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I agree, maybe that's not ideal. I don't want to rush through it simply because they're no longer a fit. I'd rather us take the right amount of time, because it's also, it's not like we're not still doing work to further the school, right? So I think that we wait until there's a better time and we can apply all of our mental energies with all the constituents involved, right? Because that's your point, January's shot for you. And I'm assuming it's not gonna be any easier, January's not gonna be easier. You too. So I think, let's do it right, right? We know it needs to be done, but let's do it right, let's not rush through it and let's look to, you know, February or March for the right time, but it also has to be a workshop because we need to be able to go back and forth, we need to be able to deliberate and have, you know, dissenting opinions and debate and so that's something that we can just kind of do just to get it done. So I guess, I don't know if February or March is the right time, but it's, it's not tonight and it's not January. Let's do it right.
So I like the idea of March after the elections. However, I think May was talked about because that's after all board members have been oriented, which might be able to happen by April. The other thing we could do is, do we set short-term goals? Do we say this is what we're going to happen in the next four or five months? Maybe we do want to see another data presentation, maybe we want an update on things. Do we want to look into short-term goals versus waiting until May under our current some achieved goals?
Yeah.
Public session timer is just one.
Thank you. That was it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we, I don't know if we need to wait until May because while I agree, you know, there's, there is an onboarding or just ready, a potential new members, I also think anybody coming on is gonna have, is gonna have spent some amount of time, you know, kind of being aware and paying attention of the issues and, and at the minimum, they're gonna be an involved community member, which means they don't necessarily need an orientation or an onboarding to participate in a workshop. So I think, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm not sure the exact right month is, April could be fine or, you know, or March right after. But again, I think big for me, it's, it's not tonight and it's not January. So what is the right time out of February through April for a workshop?
Yeah, just to remind the board that we are hoping also that the board will take on the actual presentation of the budget at the March meeting. In the past, it's been Kate that's done it, which really isn't, I don't want to say appropriate, but it is the board's budget and so we may need to do an additional workshop around you all presenting the budget. Usually different people take different warrants, you know, they're comfortable with and kind of highlight the major changes and then where they are as resources, but it is the board's budget and so we're hoping to shift that responsibility to the board and that may take an extra workshop in that February time. So I would imagine if that's the case, if we plan that March time for our goals workshop and then if we needed a workshop around, you know, presentation of the budget as the board, if he does, felt if you needed an extra meeting or you wanted extra questions or things like that, there would be some flexibility. Of course, we can do it anytime you want, but just a reminder that if the board, I know I talked to Kate about that, is, you know, really is the board's budget. They do do a lot of work with the FAC and it's your budget and so Kate, happy to present. I think some of the videos of, this is what we do with SMS, so people know what the money is spent on and then you're presenting the proposed budget to the town because that's why you're elected, that's a major function of yours. And so I think that all of you take that responsibility seriously, it would be nice if you could present it to the town because you're elected to do that, that's a major responsibility, finance. So, but you haven't done that before as a board, so you may want to spend an extra lecture time in February prepping for that, I'm not sure.
So how's March sound for a workshop?
Well, it doesn't really make any sense to do it in March in terms of like the elections are at the end of the month. When are the elections, mid?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth? So we would do it like, they go like, a week later.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a great point, but let's kind of, let's, let's take the counter to that, is what's wrong with that. Right, again, if someone, it's not like someone's just gonna, you know, move, what is the election on the 14th? Not somebody's gonna move into town on the 13th, sign up to, you know, for the election on the 14th and have no idea what's going on, right? Yeah, they have to file in January, so there's gonna be some, it's like they're coming in completely unaware. And again, if.
I would suggest at least April to give that person a meeting.
Okay.
For those people to get ready for the district.
The meet, just so you have, March meeting is the 15th, it's a day after. If you're talking about a workshop anyway, you could do it the next week or, because then they would have one meeting, you don't have to wait till April, you could still be in March. I'm just looking at the calendar, the third Wednesday is very early because the first is a Wednesday, so it's usually like, we're thinking like right now is the 21st, nearly the end, right? The 15th feels very different, I think, when you're thinking weeks, not in a month.
And sometimes we can do it if people do a four to six workshop before the board meeting on that same day.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? You want it sooner than later. I mean, it's obviously up to you all whenever you want it or what time, you can do it at 6:00 in the morning if you want, whatever.
I mean, I think for a workshop, it's not necessarily the, the intense environment that a, that a public meeting is, that anybody coming in will be able to at least participate and weigh in. Again, they have to file in January so they kind of know what they're getting into. But, I mean, I'm open to that part of the, the final date, I'm open to the discussion, but I just think, I don't think there's any why we're doing it near the end, you know, March or after the election.
Jennifer, Eric, could you have thoughts on timing? I think the part that just bothers me is like then we'll have been in office a year without reflecting our, you know, missions or.
That's fair. So, but let me, but if, even if we were to decide something tonight, what would, would that, how would that impact the January and February meeting, knowing that we have personnel?
Yeah, I mean, I hope it would shape our agenda. You know, and I think like the reasons I asked about student-led conferences is because I thought that was such a powerful presentation of those. And I think it does, you know, depending on what sort of goals we set for ourselves establishes who comes in and talks to us and kind of how we talk to the community and I really want to see sort of the meeting support the goals.
Do you think it's, it's fair to say that a goal will definitely be around building, building needs?
Right.
I mean, I take that, so that is on our agenda. I mean, I can't imagine that won't be a goal.
Yeah.
Written somewhere, you know, about the need of the building and the building project and things like that, so that's worded.
Yeah. I guess I just think, you know, I run a nonprofit, and right, we have a strategic plan, it would be kind of a lack of leadership that I would operate without, sort of a path. So that's what bothers me about this. I understand the practicalities of it, obviously. Budget season.
See, I always, since I've been here four years, and it's no one's fault.
You're here for fact. Can you wait until we get back to the fact? Thank you so much. That's okay, thank you. We'll finish this conversation and then go back to this. Thank you.
Your rap analysis, same as mine, I think, but, so, you know, I mean, I think it would have been better to come to this realization earlier. So since we haven't, I think the practicality of, I mean, this is nothing we have to move on or vote on tonight, this is just an agenda item, really, right?
And a valid one, I mean, we need to, we need to do something. Again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm open to the debate, I'm open to the conversation. I just, you know, again, I think the practicalities of it, I just, I just want to make sure that it's thoughtful, and that it's deliberate, and that we have the time, we have the time to go through it and create a very well-thought-out plan. And that is my worry, is that, you know, I completely hear what you're saying, and you're spot on. But I also think, you know, we are doing, generally speaking, the work that needs to be done, right? We know we have the budget, we know we have the building, you know, and, and a lot of the standard operating procedures, the policy works, safety and security, all those things are still happening. And so is it possible we're missing a really large goal for the, for the school? Maybe, could be. But we're still moving the ball forward, and I just, I just, I'm terrified of splashing through something to check a box and not having, you know, the time to really go through and have the discussion.
Agreed. I don't think it should be a box-checking exercise at all. I think it's as valid of a responsibility of the board as any other.
So can I make the suggestion that we confer with Kate Davis about sitting at a workshop? And what? Are you guys comfortable with waiting till March or not?
I think she could make a recommendation, just as setting the agenda as the chair, and solicit feedback.
Yeah, because if that, if we wait till March, there's also potentially new leadership on the board. Kate may or may not be the chair, so that drastically changes the direction.
True.
So just point of clarification, would I just put board goals, ask Kate to put board goals under old business again for next month? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yeah, please.
I'm going to pause on new business and go back to the fact and hear what you've brought back to us.
All right, so we talked, we talked.
I'm sorry, the mic is off, can you just hit that button? Thank you.
Is that on now?
Okay.
So we talked a little bit last week, and we've, we'd obviously talked for a little while in there tonight as well. What I would say is, first off, Kate, you, as always, have done a fabulous job putting this together. There's so much thought put into it, and I know this year is completely unprecedented. We have all of the sort of after-effects of what happened during the pandemic, the learning loss that occurred, and what you've discovered when you've done some assessments around that, and what needs to then be plugged in to fill those gaps. All of that is well thought out, obviously, based on what you've presented. And, and I, I do encourage you or the board to be really mindful of making a point of really hitting that home with the voters when they come, both to the budget hearing and then on district meeting night, because I think that's so important to the mission of, of the school. I, this is my 10th SMS budget, I think now, when I was thinking about it earlier today, I'm like, this is the 10th SMS budget that I've looked at. And sometimes initially, when we were proposing budgets, I say we, because I was on, I was previously on the board when we were proposing budgets, we were maybe close to 6% or 7%, and we always knew that's going to look really, that's going to look like a large increase to our voters in town. When I see 8.7%, I worry about what that's going to look like to people who are not going to be here to hear the full presentation. Like, they may hear about it after the fact, when, when the, when the budget is approved at the district meeting, and not be all that thrilled that it got passed. And so then they start paying attention. So what happened in 2007, we had the recession, and there were lasting effects from that. In 2008, 2009, when I came on, 2010, we were still hearing from people in the, in the community who were saying, I haven't had a raise in like five years, but I'm seeing these increases in the budget. And, and there was a group in town that they got a lot of support, and people showed up, and for the first time ever, they refused to support the budget. And that year, it wasn't just the operations budget, it was also the teachers' contract. So for the first time ever, they turned down the teachers' contract, and they turned down the operations budget. So the following year, the teachers didn't have a new contract, so they didn't have raises, they didn't have colder raises, and they didn't have the increase in operations funds that they needed to operate the programs that the, that the school needed at the time. So that's my concern with that sort of historical knowledge in the back of my mind. There's, this, I know this is a lean budget, I mean, you went through it line by line with us, and I know that it's a lean budget. So the only thing that, you know, we recommend doing is taking the $190,000 from the Fed, the regular line item, and then the $40,000 from the transportation. So that's $230,000, and that you move that, and that's our recommendation to the board, is that you move that to a warrant article instead of having that in the operations budget. That way, the operations budget isn't sort of held hostage by that very large expense that we know we can take out of the Fed budget if indeed we actually need it for the following year. And that would apply both to related services that you guys were speaking to earlier. And then it gives you also that wiggle room to know that if you're trying to do maybe some creative things to keep students from being an out-of-district placement, again, those funds are there to, to address that if you're bringing specialists or whatever. We're not here to tell you what you should do with the money, we're just looking at the reality of what, what people in town are going to see. People, people's wages are not keeping up with inflation, we know that. And that's my only concern, is that that looks like a really big number, and putting the 230 in a separate warrant article, and whether that would be raised and appropriate, I don't know, Esther could probably make a recommendation about that. But that, you know, that takes, that shaves a one and a half percentage points off that increase, and that makes it a little more palatable, I think. It's still high, but I think people understand when they come to the presentation, there'll still be people in town that you have to, you guys are going to have to sell the budget to, it's your budget, you're the board, and they're going to be coming to you, and some of them are going to be upset. And, you know, you'll need to do what you can to try to convince them that, you know, this is not about just spending money recklessly, that, that there really are some needs here involved, and that, you know, special ed is, is a huge expense. And the, and the voters already approved the, the teachers' contract, so that's not, you know, that's also not negotiable. So, yeah, that's our recommendation. I don't know if you guys have anything else you wanted to add to that, but.
Sorry, what was the two, you said, especially, what was the second one you recommended?
So there was a, so there was a, a transportation increase that goes along with that $190,000, which is also a, from what I understand, a, what am I saying?
Page 13.
A possibility for an increase in transportation. It's not necessarily needed right now with students that are currently using special education transportation.
So, my only question is, I don't know the answer to this, Heidi, and you may, with your experience, is if it's a separate warrant article around those particular items, and it's voted no, no means no. So if it becomes a need by federal law, and we have to increase transportation, I'm not sure we can pull it out of the fund, because no means no. The voters have said, no, you cannot spend that money on that cost. And I'd have to get legal counsel on that, because I'm not 100% sure.
We're not allowed to take special ed transportation out of the, out of the trust fund?
We can, but if you put a separate warrant article, and it gets voted down, it doesn't pass, no means no. Voters have said you cannot spend that money on that cost.
That's a good question.
So I would want to ask legal counsel, if, could we pull it out of the special ed trust fund if we needed to, even if the voters said no around the operating budget? I don't know the answer to that question. I just, I just, that's my only thing I'm thinking about, is I know when voters, anytime you put something separate in a separate warrant article, I've always been told by legal counsel, no means no.
Yeah, that is true.
And, and I guess what I'm saying is, it's no different than what we've done in prior years, where we just asked the voters to put an additional $250,000 into the Fed trust fund. So you're just increasing the, the balance, not necessarily saying what the funding would be for, just you're asking the voters to put money into the Fed fund to hedge against unknown costs that could come up the following school year with out-of-district placements.
Okay, so I misunderstood you. I thought you wanted it to stay specifically to be spent on transportation.
And it may have sounded that way when I first said that, yeah, but it would just be a, it's just, it's just, yeah, it's just either raise or, raise and appropriate, or end of year, out of fund balance, right?
We won't have that fund balance, we're pretty clear. But, so, that's, that, I believe that's different. I would still double-check it just for my own peace of mind, to make sure that we could pull it out of special ed trust, the money that's already in May, should we need.
Yeah, I would not earmark it, I would simply say it's another increase of that, of that
To go to that trust.
To that trust fund, with a very clear explanation to the voters that night, that here's why we're asking for these additional funds to the trust fund, and this is what the current balance is, and, and by the way, here's what it costs for one student to have an out-of-district placement, and here's the transportation cost for one student to have an out-of-district transportation cost. I mean, it's astonishing, but voters need to hear that information, because it's, it's real, and we have to, we have to provide those services, and we want to provide those services, right? I mean, it's important.
Yeah, the only other piece will be when Selena gives us the figures of how much she needs to pull out of the trust fund, you're going to ask the board to pull out the trust fund now, would we have remaining in there, the 230 left? Because it's, as well, no. But I don't have any choice if the team decides that the service is required, it's federal law, we provide it, so we would have to pull it out of the budget somehow if it wasn't in the trust fund. So we just want to really careful to balance that as we move forward, if that's what the board decides to do, is a separate warrant around that.
Thank you, Heidi. Any other thoughts or suggestions?
That was it.
That was it? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for being so thoughtful about that. I appreciate the time. I know I'm sending the emails, and it looks like a million meetings, but thank you for, I know it's a lot, it's extra, especially this time of year. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, my pleasure. Thanks. Okay. Moving on to new business. This, do you want it now?
Yes.
Do you mind? Absolutely not. We are going to jump ahead to our visitor. Can you come up?
Wyatt, do you want to let them know who you are and where you come from? Put that down to you. Oh, got it? Is it on?
Yeah, I think so. I don't know.
Yeah, it doesn't like come in here.
It may be on without making, yeah.
It's a recording device, not an objection.
I'm Wyatt from Mrs. Craig's class in 5C, and I'm going to show you, tell you about the sensory hallways and the Zen Den.
Awesome. Wyatt's on our student council here at the Zen, the students of 5C, and so we're going to take you on a little field trip, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to start with the sensory hallway, or the?
Probably best start with sensory hallway.
Okay, we'll follow you. Well, just for purposes of the tape, we're going to go to what two places?
Sensory hallway and the Zen Den.
Sensory hallway and the Zen Den. Thank you. Thank you. It's good to see you. Oh, that's okay.
That was really good.
Jared, I don't, it's under, maybe there's a superintendent's committee.
The valuation thing? We did meet to redefine what the process should look like, or the remainder of Dr. Ryan's term would look like. So we come up with a draft, give them correspondence directly from the chair of that committee to get the firm's feedback on that, and so we'll be able to have an update for, I think, whatever the finalized work product is for that. And it was good, it was a good discussion around both what, how it should be reformed going forward, et cetera, so.
So is Dr. Ryan setting new goals for himself for now through the end of June? Is that the?
It's a collaborative process, I think, perhaps more collaborative than it was previously in terms of, and I think factors outside of, of those that are self-determined are also included in that. But those were, those are drafts, so be able to present the final, what's, I sort of determine, we can bring it back for any feedback here as well, of course.
Thank you. And new business for Kate and Ken. Ken, are you prepared to talk about that? Is that public now? Is that?
Do you want to go into, what we normally do is go into a non-public session to discuss it, and then you would come out and vote to approve the, what's been negotiated. And I do have one other matter for non-public.
Okay. Great. So I think we're done with public. Yes, yes, everybody?
Yeah.
Excellent. Can I have a motion to go non-public? What are we going under?
Going under RSA 91A311C.
Thank you. I'll move.
Thanks.
Second?
Second.
Thanks, Ken.
And this is a roll call.
And a roll call vote.